Good evening. We will now call to order the regular meeting of the Lompoc City Council for Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Ball.
Here.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Vega.
Here.
Mayor Protam Gilda Ayo.
Here.
Mayor Janelle Osborne.
Here. Please rise and join me for the invocation by Pastor Ron Cockrell, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, we thank you so much that we could come together in the matters of our city. We ask for your blessings. We ask for your wisdom. Lord, as you lead us through the process, we thank you for our citizens of our, of Lompoc. Thank you for the great things that you are doing in our city and that you continue to help us advance. Lord bless all our council members, our mayor, council members. Lord, we thank you for our chief, our far chief, our police chief, and, or we thank you for our city manager, our city leaders, Lord. So we ask, Lord, that as we go about the business today, that you give us instructions, give us wisdom in all that we do. We thank you in your name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those of you watching from home and listening from home, we apologize. Our video feed is not working appropriately. We are recording it so that you will have video upon it being posted. But the video transmitter that goes from locally to the station is giving us difficulty. So again, we apologize. You can hear us if you are tuned in online and on Comcast, but you can't see us right now. So I'm just reaffirming that for the public. You can also listen to us at K-Peg 100.9. If the cameras suddenly go on, that's a great thing, but know that in the room, they're on, they're recording, and you will be able to see the full meeting on the YouTube posting tomorrow afternoon. All right. City Manager, what would you like to report to us?
Well, it's a good thing that we're getting that equipment replaced soon.
Exactly.
Have that to look forward to. Give Christie a second there. I guess I can thank facilities for doing the carpet. It looks great. I also got a new table back there. They're doing a great job. All right, you go the first one. Just want to bring everybody's attention to some of the work that's being done out there. If you noticed, F Street got repaved, and they did some pretty thick pavement, too, and they did it up there in I Street. That's all part of the Strauss Project, Wins Project. Next slide. Oh, we have, the Quaddick Center is now open. They opened the 26th, and they'll have rec swim Saturday and Sunday from 1:00 to 3:00. Next slide. We're also taking applications for the scholarship program. It's $100 per person. First come, first served, so you need you to get involved in that if you want to get part of it. That'll be on the Lompoc, City of Lompoc rec, or you can call 875-8100, and that's funded through the CDBG programs. Also, the library is seeking artwork. That'll be displayed for the 2025 calendar year at the Grossman Gallery. They'll also have some at the Village Library as well. If you want more information, you can go to thecityoflompoc.com/library or 875-8787. And just finally, I just want to remind everybody that due to the Labor Day closing of the facilities, your trash, recycling, and green waste will be delayed a day. And that's all I have for tonight.
All right. Any questions for our City Manager? All right, seeing none, we will move on to public comment on consent calendar. You have three minutes. You may call in at 805-875-8201, or you may come to the podium for three minutes. Tonight's consent calendar has approval of minutes for the Lompoc City Council's regular meeting. Just to make sure we give enough time, I'll go ahead and read consent calendar process. All items listed on a consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the council vote. Any items withdrawn from the consent calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communication near the end of the meeting. Seeing no one call in and no one rise, we will close oral communications and bring it back to council for questions or motion in a second. Councilmember Ball.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent calendar.
And Ms. Ayo.
Second. And we have a motion and a second. Let's vote.
And that passes 5-0. All right. Now is your time for general oral communications on anything not on the agenda. If you would like to speak, come to the podium for your three minutes or call in at 805-875-8201.
My name is Al Mori, proud member of this community for 40 years. I enjoy the facilities that's provided here, specifically the pool. I have a little back problem, so I use the pool, and it's good. My concern there is you just finished a two-week repair program over at the city pool there. The only problem I see is they didn't pull the weeds on the roof. I'm a farmer from Kansas originally, and I know soil and water and growing is not going to be good for any material. And I think somebody ought to, I don't know what the material up there is made of, or how long it'll last, or anything else. I just know if it goes bad, you've got a big problem. And I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Thank you. All right, seeing no one else rise and no one call in, we will close oral communications and move on to the council agenda. Our first item, number two for council, is non-resident fee charges from Lompoc landfill. And I believe we have, our utilities director is here to begin the presentation.
Yes.
Because there are other names listed here, but since they weren't jumping out of their seats.
I'm taking the, taking the responsibility to cover for the two, since it was for both utilities and finance. So, and this has not got a presentation, so there's not anything that people will miss on the screen. Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, audience here and at home. I have just a few highlights from the agenda item staff report, just to kind of highlight. One thing I wanted to bring up is there's a waste shed that the city landfill receives from. And that's generally the Lompoc Valley. It extends out to Mail Road to the east. So anything beyond that is really something we don't accept. We don't, we just don't even accept that. So just wanted to bring that up because there are people that once in a while come in from Buellton or solving, and we have to turn them away. So other than those, the people within the Lompoc Valley, the city is acting as a market participant for the landfill because we're competing with others, primarily Santa Maria. And as a market participant, we can, we don't have to abide by Prop 218, which requires us to not charge beyond the cost of service for people within the community. So we can charge whatever the market will bear, given whatever is approved by the city council. It's worth noting that the current rate study, that rate design that we have is based on a cost of service study that included a certain amount of revenues from outside of the city deliveries to the landfill. So any changes to that would probably, up or down, would change what is required to meet our revenue requirements. As I mentioned, Santa Maria is also a landfill. They also have a landfill. And they have a structure that allows for people from outside the area to bring materials. And we're basically in competition with them. Their rate structure is a little bit different than ours. Our minimum is for 500 pounds. Their minimum is for 1,000 pounds. They also have a car rate, just like we have a car rate, and they have a tipping fee. In the early part of the year when we implemented our $100 tipping fee for tonnage, we actually had a significant amount of franchisees haulers that provide services to the outside residents through the county franchises. They actually just started going to Santa Maria instead of here, which reduced our tonnages, which because of the projections we have, reduced what we thought we were going to get compared to what we did get, and has an adverse effect on our financials. Santa Maria is about 50 minutes away, 30 miles. So it's within reason that people would go over there instead of here. If they have a price differential, that's enough where they can choose to go there. If they don't choose to go there and they continue to come here, there would be some practical issues that we'd have to contend with at landfill. The first one is the landfill attendants at the Scale House would have to effectively test every single customer that comes through to see if they're a resident or not. That will increase operational costs because it will take longer to do. By taking longer, it will likely increase the queues that are at the landfill when there's more than one person there. And if you have people queuing up, they'll be a little less happy with their services because they're going to take more time than they expected to go through. And that may lead to some adversarial interactions with city staff because they're upset or unhappy with how things are going. The other negative experience could be that people just don't deliver to the landfill. They start dumping in our alleys, and that would increase our cost of enforcement through the solid waste utility, which has a code enforcement person going through the alleys, picking up stuff that's dumped there illegally. We didn't do any kind of analysis of how much might be dumped in the city, but just to give you an example, the, if we had to add another staff and a vehicle for that staff, it would likely be $200,000 a year just to add that staff to meet, if there's enough illegal dumping in it because of this. With that in the context, the solid waste department did an analysis based on what they know of existing customer base. And they said the maximum we probably could expect from doing a increased, and the assumption here is at 1.5 times, which is what we do for water and wastewater. Their, their estimate was about $10,000 of increased revenues because of doing this. And it could be substantially less if the franchisee haulers for the county decide to go elsewhere. That kind of concludes my points I take out of the staff report. And just go back to the recommendation is to just make no changes to the landfill rates as they currently stand, at least at this point in time. And that concludes my comments. Christie Donnelly from Finance, Keith Quinlan from the, from Solid Waste, and I are here to answer questions.
All right. Any questions from the council? Councilmember Ball.
So I think that all makes sense, but just for clarity, you had mentioned that, maybe I didn't hear you correctly, that sometime, on occasion, we have to turn somebody away. But you said that we're not offering necessarily the same thing as Santa Maria, but we're competing with them. Can you clarify?
So Santa Maria will take refuse from anywhere. So if I wanted to go over there and dump trash, they will take it based on the, the car load or the trailer load. We have a limitation that we have self-imposed on our landfill that we would only collect from the Lompoc Valley. And I use the easternmost Mail Road as the easternmost, but there's also southern limits and northern limits. We don't take any trash from Vandenberg Village. They have their own contract with outside hauler who hauls off somewhere else. So we really just serve the Lompoc Valley. But Santa Maria will take it from anywhere.
And then just in this, and you had mentioned the word competition, and you said that in some context, a lot of trucks will drive 40, 50 miles. In some sort of context, would rather drive to Santa Maria than to...
Well, we had that experience. When we raised our tipping fees as part of the rate study, the contract haulers for the county, for the two areas of the county that are in the Lompoc Valley, they just decided to go to Santa Maria. And they only stopped doing that when Santa Maria raised their rates enough where that transportation cost was minimized. So they started coming back, but it took two and a half, three months for them to change based on their financials. And the reason they did that is because the rate study that we presented that was published somehow didn't get to those people at the county when they were making their franchise agreements, and it was not included in their competitively-based RFPs that what our rates would be. So.
Thank you for clarifying.
Any other questions for staff before we go to public comment? All right, thank you. Standby. We may have more questions. If you'd like to speak to this item, you're more than welcome to come to the podium for your three minutes, or you may call in at 805-875-8201.
Carl Jones. I think we talked about this trash a while back ago, I think it was. And my concern, once again, our taxpayers pay for the stuff that happens at our dump. So I get charged there. I pay for my trash cans that are outside my house. I'm getting charged. I get charged and I take stuff to the dump. People that don't live in Lompoc, they only have to pay when they go to the dump. They don't pay anything extra. We have a small town, small tax base, and I think they put out recently that that dump is almost full. What happens then? You know, my taxes going up again, we can put some catch, catch patients here for us to, the citizens of Lompoc pay for while these outer line ranches keep bringing their green waste, their whatever there is out of their barns and dumping in our landfill without an additional cost. They said, I've lived around the world. Every town I've ever lived in, people, the citizens paid less than the people that did not live within that realm. So if you did not pay in the area where you pay, you know, if you didn't live where you paid the taxes for that dump, you paid extra because you're only going there now and then. You should pay a little extra because you're not paying for the full maintenance of that facility. My taxes are. Theirs aren't. They live out there. They don't have to pay the City of Lompoc taxes. You know, so, sorry, but people that do not live in Lompoc, in my opinion, need to pay a little bit more. If they had to print a little sticker to put on the car window, I mean, the window of my car, so be it. That's what they used to do. In fact, at one town, they used to give us a little card. You had a little card. You just go, here, here's my card. It says I'm authorized to use the dump. They charged me on that fee. But the people that didn't have the card, that lived in the outer base, outer areas, that didn't pay the taxes for that dump, guess what? They paid a little bit extra. So, you know, and you're saying, well, they might dump elsewhere throughout the city. They already do. Come down to Laurel any day of the week on the train tracks. We got, as soon as the weeds are high enough, they're dumping. Don't get me started about the riverbed. I see stuff down there. They're dumping, you know, all over this town. So we already need more personnel in Solid Waste to pick up the stuff that's already there. So yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna dump. But I still don't think that I should have to pay this, this, and this when the person outside who's bringing trash into our city only has to pay a little bit. So I think we might need to look at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
My representative, Madam Mayor, and councilmembers, I agree with what the gentleman just said, that in an account where you have a landfill that's getting rapidly filled up, can we afford to have things from outside of jurisdiction when they develop faster? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no one else rise and no one call in, we will close public comment on this item and bring it back to council for discussion. Maybe Mr. Quinlan can give us a quick update on the left lifetime in the landfill.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers Keith Quinlan, Solid Waste. The Lompoc landfill has an estimated life of approximately 10 years remaining. We are in the stages now of starting to plan for what to do next. And there are a couple of different options. I'll just present some general options. We have the possibility of expansion of the current landfill. We are looking at that. If we do, if we do do that, that may require a liner system and leach aid collections, something that our landfill right now, which is a pre-subtitle D landfill, does not have. Another option is a transfer station, and we would build a transfer station. The trash would come in there, it'd be dumped into a large trailer, taken out and transferred, likely to the Santa Maria Regional landfill. Those are just a couple of options for the future of waste in Lompoc after the Lompoc landfill fills.
Thank you for that. I think it's important to understand that's one of the reasons that we're very careful about Lompoc Valley being able to utilize the landfill is not being at the same capacity level as some of the surrounding landfills. And that helps us extend the life a little bit longer by limiting it to the Lompoc Valley, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Councilmember Ayo.
So just to be clear, Santa Maria does not charge for a different rate for customers that are not part of their city limits or their, they just have one rate, correct? Whether you live in Santa Maria or you're anywhere else in the county, you're able to dump there, and it's one rate?
That is my understanding. That is correct. There's one rate for all their customers, whether it's their city trucks that bring the waste in, or whether it's a commercial company or a resident. And that would be from within their city or outside of their city. Currently, all the Vandenberg Space Force Base waste goes to Santa Maria.
Just to expand a little bit on that, we did contact our rate study consultant about this. And there are, he, he agrees with the recommendation. And there are very few, if any jurisdictions within California that have a rate structure that would bifurcate in-town and out-of-town customers. So just bring that up as a comparison to the rest of California.
Okay. Any other questions? Discussion? Councilmember Ball.
So just to clarify, so just so the community understands this. So I'm to understand that we do, for water, sewer, and solid waste, we charge one and a half times for everyone outside. Is that right? But we don't do that necessarily for electric. Is that what I'm reading?
I believe that's my understanding, that there are areas that are just adjacent to the city that we provide services to at one and a half times the rate.
So again, I'm, you know, I don't necessarily have, I lean one way or the other. I think I go back to just the idea of competition. So if we're talking about competition, we're talking about competing for revenue. So I'm kind of curious about, well, if we keep the rates the same way, does our revenue stay stable or start to go up because everyone's coming our way? Or if we raise it, are we pretty sure our revenue is going to go down because no one's going to visit?
So I think your question is basically, we are comparing the rate structure we have now, which was based on our cost of service study, with the proposal to change it for those that are not collection customers. Because there are some collection customers that are outside the city limits. So by changing the rate for those outside the city limits that are not collection customers, that would make a difference between what we're expecting to collect and what we would be collecting. And that analysis would be based on a lot of different things. It would be based on, do we do one and a half times? Do we do one point? Do we do two times? Do we do one, 10% more? It all can kind of depend. So the analysis that I made were real rough. That 50-minute commute to Santa Maria would probably be about a $10 to $20 increase in gas prices, gas cost for somebody. So if our differential is 20 bucks between us and Santa Maria, someone can go to Santa Maria and they are basically the same. So, but right now, it's kind of odd because the car rate is about there. So if somebody taken a car over there would probably be agnostic to any kind of one and a half times. But for the tonnage rates, they're roughly the same. So it wouldn't, wouldn't be much difference. But for the tonnage rates of 2,000 ton, 2,000 pounds that are commercial haulers, they would definitely change their choice of where to go. And that's where most of the revenues that we're expecting to get, based on our projections, is coming from. The individual customers that are coming from outside the city limits are a fairly relatively very small customer base. So we're looking at that customer base, which is a small percentage of a small percentage that we're talking about. So really, we need to look at is the cost benefit of doing this there. And based on the solid waste analysis of $10,000 over a whole year, it seems like it is a solution trying to find a answer. So.
Thank you for that.
Councilmember Ayo.
So I'm a little confused. So, I'm a little confused with staff's position on the whole competition thing because I think as we've heard and I think with the discussion prior, we don't necessarily want to compete with Santa Maria for this kind of business because our landfill size, obviously, we're faced with something unique in the next ten years, as you just mentioned, and so this is probably not the area where we want to say we want to compete. However, I want to also make sure that I understand, though, staff's point about, so, to, to split the fees and say, okay, we're going to charge residents of Lompoc this much, which the council has agreed and has approved, and non-residents of Lompoc are going to get charged this much. You're saying that the, the revenues that we will get out of that is not penciling out with the cost it will take for us to be able to, like, do the actual administrative of separating the fees and, you know, whether we need to bring a second person on at the landfill to be able to handle, you know, the time spent or the volume of what the day may look like. Is that what you're saying? I'm trying to understand that portion of it.
And the reason why the projections from the cost of service study are important is the rates that we are charging our, our customers and the rates we're charging the landfill are based on the cost of services for those two components. So if one of the revenue streams goes down during the cost of service study period, the timeframe, then at the end of that timeframe, we'll look at the deficit we had compared to what our projections were, we'll probably have to raise rates a little bit higher on collections to make up that difference.
Got it.
So, there's no, there's not going to be any change in collection rates during the five-year period because they're set. But at the end, if our revenues from the landfill are lower because the volumes are lower, and they have been, and they're lower even more so because the franchise haulers are deciding to go elsewhere, then we just have to collect more on the collection side to make sure that we're meeting our financial obligations.
So our, on our resident rates, our rates are lower than Santa Maria. If you're looking at per car trip charge or whatever, as of July first, it's sixteen dollars where Santa Maria charges twenty-one dollars, correct? And then in, in July of 2025, we go up just one dollar to seventeen, while Santa Maria goes up to twenty-two. And then so on and so forth. So, and I think that's also the same if you're looking at Lompoc's landfill rates for minimum fees of up to five hundred pounds. So we actually charge people up to five hundred pounds, whereas Santa Maria actually goes up to eight hundred and so on. And so their fees are a lot higher. So what you're saying is, by us having these lower rates for our resident customers, some of that subsidy comes in from these other non-resident customers that we can take in into our landfill right now, and that helps to build that, that picture for us, correct?
So, the, the positive of this is we kind of show that for car deliveries or small trailer or truck deliveries, our rates are much more competitive than they are in Santa Maria. It becomes less so when you get the, the higher commercial tonnages. And that's where most of the volume is. And, and it's a, it's a balancing act between revenues and volume because we don't want to take so much in, and that's one reason why we don't take the volume from Vandenberg Air Force Base, Space Force Base, because we want to maintain, retain that ten years or fifteen years of life because it's very valuable to, to us and our residents. So we want to maintain that, but we also are looking at it from the Lompoc Valley. We should serve the Lompoc Valley, and that's, that difference is pretty small when you're looking at the car and truck deliveries as opposed to the commercial haulers.
So, for the non-resident customers, the way I, I'm viewing it is we have two options for our non-resident customers. If we go up on the rate, it doesn't really, there's, there's a fear that some of it, some of that revenue will go away because then they'll say, okay, well then I can just go to Santa Maria, right? Because in some of, in some cases, those fees are higher than, than Santa Maria. So I see that on your chart. Or second would be that then, and it, and it creates that two-charge thing where we now have to have the administrative task of having to separate who's who, and so I understand that. So the cost might not be a benefit to taking on the payroll or the added cost of the administrative fee. But otherwise, then we would be looking at, if we wanted to stick with one fee, then we would be potentially increasing our regular customers, which would then be also unfair or we, that's not necessarily what we would want to do. Is that kind of, am I getting that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. The, the other side difficulty would be, one person mentioned a tag in the car or a card that you bring. We're a small town, people in town, no people out of town. They've probably become some little side market of sharing cards or sharing cars. I have no idea how much that would be, but there are people in town that are just nice and they would say, I'll, I'll take it up for you. So there, there's also that component which we wouldn't be able to control.
So now, talk to me about the rate study then, because putting now the rate study into play, you're saying that our rate study is based on the volume and the sales that we're doing right now. If that changes, that dips, then we might have to really look at a much higher makeup of that, which would then increase our own resident fees again to try and make up for that imbalance, correct?
Right. So when we look at the next cost of service study and the next rate study, we'll have to look at what our revenues have been for the two components, collections and landfill, and see where, did we do better than the projection? Did we do worse than the projections? Was the reason for the worst, is it volume only or is it rates? And that landfill is mostly volume. And our volume is down compared to what we were looking at for the cost of service study. So I, I already know that our revenues are lower at the landfill because of reduced volume. And it's, reduced volume is not just people hauling stuff to the landfill, it's also everybody within the town. That hauling is lower too, which is good because it helps increase the capacity and longevity of the landfill. But also reduces the amount of money we have available to pay for the intensive capital cost of running a landfill and running a collection system.
And I just want to kind of point out too, for our residents and our public, that when you look at the chart, Lompoc does have lower rates when it comes to the per car trip charge, the minimum fee for up to five hundred pounds. But once you get to the tip fee, so if you're taking in some weighted, you know, material here, we are actually higher than Santa Maria. So in that case, at least just know residents that we are charging more for people to be able to bring in that kind of weight or that kind of, you know, trash, so to speak, into our landfill. They're going to pay more to, to come to Lompoc and to drop ship it at our place, so.
And that's primarily our collection deliveries to the landfill and the two county areas that have commercial collections. I don't, correct me wrong, but there's probably hardly any kind of individuals that are going and have that tipping fee charge as opposed to the minimums or the car rate.
And our threshold is actually lower, if I'm understanding it correctly, our minimum fee for up to five hundred pounds. So we're lower because we say up to five hundred pounds, whereas Santa Maria says you can go up to eight hundred pounds on their set fee.
Yeah. So if somebody drops eight hundred pounds, the first five hundred, it's going to be based on a, on a upper rate of the tipping fee.
Yeah. So just know residents that, I, although I'm a little, I was a little concerned when I saw this, you know, and hearing your explanation, but I also do see the side where staff is mitigating it to the extent possible while still trying to balance that revenue and that volume to get us through that threshold of being able to maintain lower rates for our residents, so.
Councilmember Ball.
So, I'm throwing a little bit of a curveball, and we're probably going to have to talk about this another time because it's kind of a big picture question. But as we, you guys have kind of laid out there, I've heard you say, yeah, ten-year lifecycle for the current, you know, rough target. And then, well, we may have ten to fifteen years. So now I'm hearing there's a little bit of a window. I'm also hearing volume is down, that might impact longevity. So that's great, or maybe it's not. And I guess my question is, at what point does our volume go down, we're barely making enough to keep it going, when the writing on the wall might be, hey, guys, we should look at the transfer station because the cost of keeping something going when we don't have the volume, we don't have the revenue, you hear where I'm coming from, that's way out there. But what should we be thinking about when we're?
So as part of the, the rate study and the cost of service study, we had talked about how we might be able to incrementally set aside funds to pay for a transfer station. So it's not just one big huge cost at the time that we have to change from delivering to our landfill to going elsewhere. That didn't make it into the final rate structure, but it is something we need to prepare for and get there because it's going to be less expensive for us to set aside money to build the transfer station than it is to go out and borrow money at the time that we determine that we have to do this at whatever the going rate is for interest. So it's better for us to prepare now than later. So, but like I said, it was not part of the approved rate study, but it will be something we would like to bring up next time because it's something that's, by the next time we are doing the rate study, we'll be five years closer to that, that eventuality.
And I'm just throwing this out there, and obviously it's hypothetical, but those extra five years where we're, it's kind of in the sunset phase of things. And if the cost of keeping that thing going is inflating the cost to the consumers over time just to keep it operating, and we haven't planned ahead, so I agree with you, we should be planning ahead for that transition because it's, it's going to cost us either way. So, thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, ironically, I was going to follow with, our closure fund, how much money do we currently hold in our closure fund and how much is it going to cost us when we have to close? Because we've got to have that projected before we could even start thinking about putting our MRF station or whatever else in. And I guess the, the second part of the question is, did the rate study take into account putting money in the closure fund? Because I know we've always been very prudent to never borrow money out of the landfill closure fund. So I, I mean, are we on track with that money at the current rates?
Yes.
That's a good answer.
So the, the state mandates that we keep track of the capacity and the volume that's in the landfill, and that is used by them to calculate what we have to have set aside in that cash reserve to meet our obligations for the closer, post-closer obligations. They, they also calculate what we, what they think we need at the end of the life of the landfill to provide for the, all the cost of closure and the post-closer needs over thirty years. So, that number right now is around six million dollars, but the cash we're holding is less than that because the expectation is we grow the cash that we have on hand up to that six million dollars between now and the time that the closure happens. So, the good thing with the interest rate environment we are right now is that closure fund is always, the expectation had always been that we would make most of the money that we needed to get to that closure target from interest. But over the last twenty, twenty-five years, interest has been so low that we've had to actually generate money out of our collections to put in there to meet that obligation. So, we're, we're meeting that obligation on the cash side, and we're keeping track of what the obligation is on the liability side every single year. And reporting that to CalRecycle and getting them to buy off of what we have in there right now.
You know, trash is big business.
It certainly is.
I guess, with enough discussion, well, thank you.
Councilmember Ayala.
Well, I was just going to put a motion on the, on the floor that we accept, that we accept staff's recommendation to leave it as is right now with the only, I think that, based on the discussion and information that we have in front of us, we can say that we are doing a, a job. You know, I think it's a good job of trying to mitigate the amount of trash that comes into our landfill. I think our rates are fair. And maybe consider staff, what they're saying about how that might affect the rate study and how that could affect then the actual residents of Lompoc and the fees that we pay there. So I would recommend that we accept this, but I would say if we could bring it back a year from now and give us an update, rather than waiting for, you know, something later on down the pipeline, I think this is something that we need to keep in the forefront and maintain counsel as well as the public on this. So that's my motion.
I'll give you a second on that, I think, absolutely. And the year follow-up is, is really a good idea. I don't want to become micromanager on this, but we're getting down to fifteen years.
Any questions regarding the motion?
So twelve months we're looking at. Where is September? September of 2025? No later than the second meeting of September 2025. Thank you.
And isn't it a budget year next year? So it might even come sooner when we're discussing potential budget?
The budget will be approved in June 25, so.
So we might even hear about it sooner simply because it might be part of the budget presentation? So we have a motion, we have a second. Any other questions by staff or council? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes five zero. All right. Thank you. The next item is item number three, is unfinished business. Discussion of addressing homelessness in light of the U.S. Supreme Court's decision in City of Grants Pass v. Johnson. And to start the discussion, we have our city attorney, Mr. Jeff Malave.
Mayor and council, on August fifteenth, 2023, I came before the council on a council request to describe what the current, at that time, constraints on the city were legally and staffing-wise and operationally with addressing homelessness and homeless encampments in Lompoc, given what the case law said at that time. At that time, there was a Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals decision that governed Lompoc and all of the Western United States that held, it's a violation of the Eighth Amendment of the Constitution for a city to criminalize conduct that is the unavoidable consequence of being homeless. What that means is cities were not allowed to criminalize sitting, lying, or sleeping on the streets or other property open to the public when there was no sleeping space practically available in any nearby, reasonably nearby shelter. And that caused a lot of difficulty and also some confusion for cities and counties in California in trying to interpret that case, in trying to interpret what was a reasonably available shelter bed. And that caused us, at least in Lompoc, we were working on a ordinance to potentially prohibit camping on public property here in Lompoc. But when we discovered that there was a Supreme Court case, U.S. Supreme Court case being considered by the U.S. Supreme Court, we put that ordinance on hold at a staff level to see how that U.S. Supreme Court case was going to turn out and how it might change or clarify the law. Just a couple of months ago, or a few months ago, on June twenty-eighth, 2024, the U.S. Supreme Court did issue its opinion in that case, and that's called the City of Grants Pass, Oregon versus Johnson. And that case overruled the prior Ninth Circuit law that said you have to have a shelter bed available if you want to enforce against encampments or camping on public property. So what the law currently is now, after this new U.S. Supreme Court case is, cities do not need to ensure that there is an available shelter bed or any available place in or near the city for homeless persons to sleep if we would like to clear encampments or enforce a camping ban on public property. That doesn't mean that we cannot provide information to the occupants of homeless shelters if we're going to clear an encampment. We still can provide that information to them about where shelters are available and resources that are available to them. And we, as, on a staff level, plan to continue, to continue providing information like that to the homeless population in the city. information like that to the homeless population in the city. It's just that it is no longer a requirement under the law to have an available shelter bed somewhere nearby. In addition to that U.S. Supreme Court decision, on July 25th, 2024, California Governor Newsom issued an executive order declaring that California is experiencing a homelessness crisis and that has been in the making for decades. It is exposing persons who do not have access to housing to dangers associated with extreme weather, fires, predatory and criminal activity, and widespread substance abuse that we all know does exist in homeless encampments. And the governor cited the Supreme Court's Grants Pass decision and encouraged local governments to take action with urgency to remove encampments from public spaces, prioritizing those encampments that most threaten the life, health, and safety of those in and around them. And the governor also ordered state agencies to remove encampments with as much urgency as possible from state-owned public property. He doesn't have jurisdiction to do that in city-owned public property, but he did encourage all local governments to do so. The Grants Pass decision does only eliminate the Eighth Amendment risks with clearing homeless encampments and having ordinances banning camping. There are also other laws that we have to ensure that we comply with. Those were addressed and summarized in the August 15th, 2023 staff report, but I'm just going to briefly go over them again. In any kind of encampment clearing or any kind of camping ban ordinance that the city may want to adopt, the law does require that before we enforce against camping, the city needs to provide prior notice to the homeless persons who are in the encampment or who are sleeping on public property, at least 48 hours is what the governor's executive order recommends. After we clear an encampment, we do need to give the occupants notice of where their personal belongings will be stored by the city, and the city does have to store those personal belongings and give the persons an opportunity to come to a place and reclaim their property from the city for a period of 60 days. The governor's order, the law was unclear on the amount of time before, but the governor's order has given a guideline of 60 days. And that's only for personal property that the residents of an encampment or a person sleeping on public property does not take with them when the encampment is cleared. If they take it with them, then they take it with them, and they can keep their property. It also does not apply if there's just property sitting on, personal property sitting on public property that is clearly abandoned. Something is clearly abandoned and no one is claiming it as their own, and that's obvious, then the city does not have to store that property, we can dispose of it. We can also dispose of items that are obviously trash without any notice. Just as a note, there is a difference in addressing homelessness on private property versus public property. If there are, if there's a homeless encampment or homeless person on private property, all the property owner needs to do is to call the police and ask for an enforcement of trespass, and the police will come, and if the owner does not want that person on their property, then the police can enforce the trespass to remove them. That is not the case on all public property because there is some public property that's open to the public. So if the city wants to address homelessness on public property, then we do need to adopt some type of rule or ordinance restricting the activities that are allowed, such as a ban on camping, a ban on sleeping on public property, or we need to adopt hours that where all members of the public would just be completely prohibited from being on that public property during certain hours of the day. We have that, for example, in parks, where if we have parks that have adopted hours of operation, all persons are not allowed in the parks outside of those hours, and that takes care of homeless persons and homeless encampments in addition to anyone else who might be there. Ordinances also need to be clear, and they cannot be enforced in a way that targets homeless people. So essentially, the most important thing there is, for example, if we do have a ban on camping on public property in the park or on any public property, we can't go into the park at night and only enforce it against people who we believe are homeless. If we have a ban on camping, we need to enforce camping ban against every person who might be camping in the park, whether they be Boy Scouts, or a group of children, or homeless people. The last two pages of the staff report have a description that is identical to the August 2023 staff report about what code enforcement's current process is for addressing code enforcement complaints, including homelessness complaints, and the police department's summary of their operational needs and their operational positions that they now have for addressing homelessness, and some comments about how the police department addresses homelessness. The chief of police and the community development director are available in the room tonight if you have questions for them. Other than that, we do have our camping ordinance on hold at a staff level. If the council would like us to bring that back, you may. Otherwise, I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Vega.
Jeff, in general, it looks like we can now enforce trespassing, loitering, and panhandling here in the city without targeting anyone, correct? Because Santa Maria, just to be clear here, Santa Maria has a panhandling ordinance in the medians here, and we don't have anything. They can still hop around in the middle of the street, whoever it is, and panhandle.
There are some, well, what we're addressing here tonight is camping and storage of personal property. Panhandling is another way that some cities have tried to address homelessness, and there are legal issues with that that would need to be considered before we brought back any ordinance regulating or prohibiting panhandling. There are some First Amendment issues with that. I'm not saying it's impossible, I'm just saying that there are certain First Amendment issues that have to be considered when we're drafting a panhandling ordinance. So if you wanted staff to look into that, we can-
Yeah, I think it's kind of a good thing for Lompoc that we put public safety first as far as the residents that are paying. Everyone wants a rate increase or something for people that do work and are using the facilities, but we have nothing enforced to compensate us for our public safety, and the fact that we have panhandlers everywhere, including McDonald's, without labeling anybody, including in front of the banks, which make us uncomfortable, and including our local parking lots, there's nothing there that protects any of us. So I think it's a good thing right now that we address what we need to address because those were the laws that were put in place regardless of whatever the county has been deficient in, the state has been deficient in, nobody's been able to handle this problem, and right now we need to take care of Lompoc. So I think that we probably should empower our public safety. We talk about public safety, but they've had their hands tied, and I've seen them, they've done a pretty good job of approaching these people or whoever it is out there doing panhandling and blocking the streets and whatever they're doing, and I've seen them, I've seen them handling it. So I have to say that it's not, it's not that it's not being done, it's just it has to be done in a roundabout way where it should be pretty direct, because I can tell you, if I was walking down the middle of the street with my cardboard, they'd take me out, only because I can pay for the fine and because I have a job. So I think that we need to address this in a more neutral manner, so maybe we can do that. I just wanted to clarify if that's the direction. You said there's First Amendment rights, but how come Santa Maria can do it and we can't?
I'm not saying we can't, I'm just saying that there are some First Amendment issues that have to be considered if we wanted, if we wanted to adopt a panhandling ordinance. We have not been directed to consider or draw up a panhandling ordinance, so if council wants to do that, then you can make a council request.
Yeah, thank you.
But there are some First Amendment issues with, panhandling is essentially speech on public property, and there's instances where maybe we can regulate someone from speaking on public property, but there are also instances where we cannot do the First Amendment.
Right. Well, I'd kind of like to see everybody kind of support the fact that we do have some sort of a camping ban on our public property. I think we were leaning that way because at a staff level it got delayed, I'm not sure, but I think we were all leaning toward, I think the law was saying that before you could only do it in certain areas, and you couldn't put a blanket ban on the entire city. Has that changed at all, Jeff, as far as that? Because it looks like the restrictions were now lifted.
Yes, the new U.S. Supreme Court Grants Pass decision allows you to put a complete ban on camping on public property throughout the entire city.
Thank you. I mean, I'd like to hear the discussion and see where we can go with this and see what the chief thinks, and let's make Lompoc, let's clean it up.
Council mayor, the city does have a municipal code for aggressive panhandling. So if somebody is being aggressive, and I think it even defines that, McDonald's, they have to be five feet back from the raised edge of the drive-through, and if you want to donate or give them money, you have to call them to the vehicle. If they just come up on the vehicle, that is defined as aggressive panhandling. And, you know, what it takes is a member of the public willing to prosecute and hold that person accountable because nine times out of 10, an officer's not right there to witness that misdemeanor violation of aggressive panhandling in the Mina Code. So that can be a challenge sometimes, but we do have some guidance from the Mina Code when addressing panhandling.
Councilmember Vega, do you have any other questions regarding that?
I have one more question, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Chief, you know, some of these businesses that have been, their property rights have been infringed upon, have you got, received complaints from anybody but the ordinances weren't in place for you to do anything? Like, for instance, McDonald's, have they complained and asked for someone to go over there and, because they sit on the little, you know, it is their property, I believe, so just a question, okay, to see if anybody's actually complained.
Typically not. Typically not, like for the business like McDonald's, I don't recall the last time I have heard a reporting party be McDonald's. It's usually somebody in a vehicle that, you know, maybe they were intimidated by the individual when they came up to the vehicle. So we do have the trespassing clause that we've got a form for some of the business owners to fill out, but it's a difficult process at times because they have to update it every 30 days, and sometimes they fall off or, you know, they don't want to keep doing it. But we try to do everything we can to support the businesses in the community.
Thank you, okay. I'm here to support you guys, I just don't know exactly which direction we're going to go. We're always afraid of doing something, but we're not afraid of increasing fees and doing everything else, so how come we're not afraid of that?
I'm not sure what your question was.
That wasn't directed to you, that was just a general statement.
Councilmember Ball.
So don't go too far, because I, since you're here, you're on the hook a little bit. I've got several questions, and again, bear with me because this is a, you know, homelessness is not something you can just shake stick at, it just goes away. This has been an ongoing problem in our community for some time. Let's just go back to the panhandling issue. At the moment, we have a regulation, we have a rule, our ability to enforce that rule is a completely different story. Do we have the staffing right now to, again, you say it'd be ideal for us to be on location to witness something, that's probably not going to happen, but my point is some of those smaller issues within the community, do we have the resources to jump on top of making sure everyone's panhandling correctly?
If a member of our community were to call us and say, hey, this just happened, we're going to respond to that. We rarely get those calls.
Sure.
But again, if we were going to do it on a proactive level, the answer to your question would be no, because we prioritize the calls for service that come in, and so we have to keep our officers available to be able to address those higher priority calls. But I guarantee you that if somebody in the community experienced aggressive panhandling and needed to talk to a police officer, we would respond.
Hundred percent, and I appreciate that. I think that leads me into my next question, because this ultimately is going to come down to some point, at least in terms of what the city can control, is staffing. So in the staff report, we talked about, hey, we set up two positions, funded two positions, their job is to go and deal with homeless issues, but our success in that area is only as powerful as those positions being filled and sustained, and how efficient and collaborative they are in their efforts with other service providers to make something actually happen. So talk to us about, we technically have those two positions, but how much further do we need to go to have years of two positions full-time addressing these needs? And if they were available, what would they be doing full-time to address homeless issues?
Well, I, so let's, this went into the, to affect this new budget, so July 1st, and from July 1st to August 23rd, based on the numbers I have, I was expecting a report today, it wasn't the date I was hoping for, so we'll get that fixed. But in that timeframe, those two officers have responded and generated 499 events in our community, and of those 499 events, 26 members of the community were arrested. Now, I don't have the exact details of what that is for, but I would tell you, a minority of that number would be non-homeless related. They are supporting patrol when the numbers are down, and if there's a high priority call like a shooting or something like that, and they're not tied up on something else, they'll go and help out on that at times. But they're out there busy every day, contacting those individuals, offering them services, trying to help get them out of the environment and the lifestyle that they're in. Should that person choose to engage in that, they'll help make those connections. So it's so far, the first couple of months, I think the numbers represent a good level of productivity. I've asked for more details in their reporting to me so I can be informational to the council and to the city manager on this, but I, at this point, in the first two months, I think we're going in the right direction, and it'll only get better with time. And as services and additional options become available in the community, in the county for people getting out of the situations they're in, I think we'll continue to see that growth. You know, I know that the community is, a lot of times, their heartstrings are pulled by individuals asking for donations or for money from the panhandling side of it. I would encourage people to donate that money to the churches because the churches are out there every day feeding these people and making sure they have food in their stomachs and have resources, whether it be a jacket or shoes or clothing of some kind. I think that's a more effective way, if you want your money to really go in a positive direction, that would be the best thing to do, in my opinion.
Thank you for that. Another question, just has, and again, a little bit sensitive on the numbers because everyone has a different idea, but I'll hear one number from the county, and they'll say, ah, roughly speaking, I think there's this many homeless people in the valley, and this has been a point in contention for some time, point in time counts. City will tell me a different number and take credit for moving a percentage, you know, or helping people, and I think that's all great. Your staff is out there on the daily, seeing what's happening in our community. We hear from a lot of people that have seen progress in certain areas but have seen other areas not improve. How does the police department look at the numbers that they're dealing with, with homelessness right now?
So the point, the point in time count is what the county typically goes off of when they're looking to throw a number at what we're experiencing. The problem with the point in time count is they don't go down into the riverbed. So unless that homeless person is up in the community, they're not going to be counted. Our staff is actually down in the riverbed, and one of those numbers I was hoping to provide to you today was that, what do we think our total count is right now? And unfortunately, I just don't have that number tonight. Hopefully, by the next meeting, we'll have that for you. So I think that's a lot of the problem with what county numbers are versus what city numbers are, because we are down there, we are counting, and we are documenting what the officers are coming across as they're going out and doing their outreach. Because part of the job is outreach, it isn't just a, you're in violation, you need to move on, or we're going to arrest you. That's not the goal. That fixes a short-term problem, it doesn't fix the long-term problem, and we ultimately want to see them have resources or connect with families so that they're not in that anymore.
So are you suggesting that the county's number is undercounting a little bit, and there's actually much more people?
No, I don't think so. I just, I know that right off the top of my head, that's one of the conflicts that we see. I think our numbers are down. I think people are getting the message that Lompoc is taking an active role in offering services and helping, trying to help people get out of that, and then those that are stubborn and not wanting to do it, then we will use the law when the law is violated. And not- And not, you know, you have to, I've said this before in a number of my presentations, homeless is a, you say homeless, and it's a big bucket, but within that bucket are smaller buckets. There's alcohol abuse, there's drug abuse, there's mental health issues, there's just people down on their luck. And typically, what you'll see is the people down on their luck, they're going to accept services right away, and we're going to be able to help them get out of that environment. But when you're dealing with the mental health aspect, that's a long-term problem that this community does not have the resources for, and we have to reach out to the county and try and get some help. But drug abuse and the alcohol abuse is something else that we can do, and what we're seeing is at times, and I've made it clear to the staff, look, we're always going to offer services every time we go out. But if it comes to a point where somebody is just refusing and being stubborn, and if they're committing a crime, address it. If they're, and that could be in possession of stolen property, that could be in possession of a weapon, that could be possession of narcotics, that could be under the influence of narcotics. It's a zero tolerance. If we're offering the surface, the services, which we have for years now, offered services to most of these people, and what we're seeing is the ones that just don't want to accept it, they want to live that lifestyle, they don't want to move forward, then if they're in violation of the law, then we're going to apply the law to it. But it is just in those situations that they're just not engaging in the multitude of options that they have today when it comes to getting help.
I appreciate that. I want to just ask you about the riverbed, because that's, I mean, we've been talking for years and certain issue, not necessarily, it's complicated, I get it, because there's jurisdictional issues, staffing issues, how much resources the county has, and who's going to take the lead on something. We've gone through this process before. There's fears about addressing or doing anything in the riverbed right now, because they might all just come into town and impact us in that way. Does it frustrate you that we haven't made a move on the issues within the riverbed? How do you view that, as a chief?
No, I think, I think in a situation like the riverbed, you have to be methodical and very purposeful about what you're doing to make it last. Because the ultimate goal, if we're going to spend the money and the resources to go in there, we've been down this road before, and previous councils didn't put things in place to make sure that it was consistent and carried on, which is what's created it to be an issue again today. We have to make sure that we're checking all of the boxes to make sure, if we're going to spend the amount of money it takes to do that, that it lasts. And that would be, if anything would cause frustration, that would be the one thing that would cause me frustration, because that was a huge team effort of multiple agencies in the county, multiple offices in the city, to see it all come back and repopulate again when it didn't need to. And as you all know, I was a sergeant at the time, and I was down there every day in the riverbed, addressing this issue. So, yeah, that, we've got to be smart, we have to be fiscal, and we have to make sure that it's going to last if we're going to do that again.
Last question, I promise. I think we've, again, if we don't do anything, it's probably going to stay status quo, maybe get a little bit worse. But in my mind, we have to come up with some sort of plan. I completely agree with you on sustaining that plan. But as we try to develop a plan, I'm wondering if, what's going to happen if, and I guess what I'm getting to is, I'm, I can't understand how, we understand it, let me rephrase this. We understand it's the county that is on the hook when we interact with somebody that is facing homelessness. Whether it's alcohol, mental health, a lot of those issues, we as a city don't have those services at all. We don't have alcohol, we don't do any of that, that's on the county. Do you feel like we have a strong relationship with the county every single time we interact with a person facing homelessness, that we are working with the county to make sure that their system of trying to figure things out, are our systems aligned together in our efforts in dealing with homeless people?
I would say there are some days it's better, and there are some days that's worse. I think that's a pretty accurate way of saying it. You know, there are times when the county does not want to be associated with the work that we do, because they don't want to be seen as the enforcement-heavy side of it, because they want people to be comfortable to come forward. I completely understand that. But at the same time, if there's not accountability, then people aren't going to always make that step that they need to make to get those services. So we see a rise and a drop in, sometimes in that support, and hopefully, we can always work through it and try and get to the positive side of it. But I think if, if we continue to put that community first as best possible, then I think we can all get to the end result the way that we need to. But I think everybody in this room understands there are people who are willing to accept help, and there are people who are not interested in help. And so we have to figure out, how do we get those people to move forward, the ones that don't want them?
I said last question, I was trying to get my brain straight on this one. My point right in my head, and I'm so sorry. Last question on this one here. Five-year plan, if we came up with a plan, and remember, I've asked you this question about different things, in five years, what would it look like? So I'm just trying to get you to paint a picture of, in five years, if everything kind of worked according to what you're hopeful for, and you've got some additional staffing, gives Longpoke some hope in five years. What could change? What would look different in Longpoke?
You know, crystal ball. We would have, you know, from a police department, we would want to see the numbers in our staffing at a point where maybe those officers are in the area when one of those aggressive panhandling happens and witness it, so that we don't put the burden of responsibility on the RP and that side. We witnessed it, so now we can act on it, right? That's what we don't have today. We don't have that free time to be able to be out in the community. You know, we've talked about staffing before, one of the, one of the new theories behind it is the rule of 60. And that, it says, you know, 60%, 60% of your staff should be on patrol, and of those 60%, only 60% of their time should be patrolling and doing actual police work. But that, that is generated by the dispatch center, so calls for service sent to them. The other 40% is maybe community involvement, proactivity work, where they're actually driving around trying to find things without worrying about the next call that's going to come in. When you have that environment, you can actually turn over stones and affect crime in the way that this community needs us to affect crime. But we're living within our means, and the city manager and the council has done an excellent job to date, in my opinion, in getting us to move forward with our numbers. We just need to see more homes, more businesses, and more revenue coming in so that we can continue to see that growth. And it's just going to take time. But it, you know, there's, you know, with the national politic world, you, many people have heard, you know, different opinions from some of the candidates of what affects crime, and maybe more cops is not the answer, and I disagree with that wholeheartedly. We have to have police officers on the street. We have to have the time to be able to do the work that is required of us by our community. And, and that's, you know, the nature of the beast that we live in this community right now, is that the money just isn't there, and not because of irresponsibility, it just isn't there. We'll get there, it's just going to take time. More bodies. With more bodies, become more expenses, right? So if I have, like we said before, if I had another 40 officers, I'd have to have another 40 lockers, I'd have to have more cars, I'd have to have 40 more vests, 40 more guns, 40 more, all of that. And that's a heavy, heavy lift for this community. So that's part of it.
Thank you for humor me through all those questions, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff before we go to public comment on this? All right, stand by. Public comment is now open on item number three. If you would like to speak to it, you may come to the podium for three minutes. You may also call in at 805-875-8201, 805-875-8201.
Carl Jones-Sitson. Aggressive panhandling is happening more than just at the stores. We've, we've had them actually come up to the houses recently. It's happened, it's actually happened a couple of times on my block alone that I know of, happened to a neighbor, happened at my house, these people actually coming up into your property, knocking on your door, give me money, you know? I really like the way Utah handled it, the state of Utah. They had a real bad panhandling problem in the Salt Lake area. First thing they did is it made it against the law, you give money to a homeless person. It's not against the law for you to go and buy them food. You go take them to the store, buy them food, you can take them to the store and buy them clothing, but if you hand somebody money, they're going to give you a $500 ticket. They say, your money's better spent if you give it to one of these organizations. People weren't listening. So the response of the city council was fine. You give money, we're going to give you a $500 ticket. The panhandling just basically went away like you would not believe. And the people that actually could use the money, got the money. I love that idea. We might want to look into it. One of the things that has been bothering me about the county level, they said we had 200 when they did the count, then they said it was a 12% raise, that makes 224. They say, we're not bringing homeless to Longpoke, but we're building a multimillion-dollar treatment facility right outside of Longpoke. And they're not allowed to be at that treatment facility from such hour to such hour, so they have no choice but to come out into our city. I mean, this is, the county is doing it to us. So are we addressing this? Because they are bringing homeless, because there's no reason to have a multimillion-dollar homeless shelter out there if you ain't bringing homeless people there. And then you're going to tell them they can't be there from 7:00 in the morning until 6:00 at night? What are they going to do? They're going to be out here, walking the streets of Longpoke. Our police officers have to take care of it. Are they, are they helping fund our police officers to take care of their problem, which they transplanted into our city? I mean, these are just, you know, a couple of small things that bother me, there's more to it. If you start looking into it, that should bother a lot of citizens of this small town, because as I said, we don't have the tax base to take care of this problem, we really don't. You know, it's 42,000 people. But, you know, I guarantee you, there's more than 200 down there in the riverbed, the amount of people I see early in the morning when I'm going to work. You know, just depends on which way I decide to take a turn, I might see, I can go one way and count 10, I go the next way and count 40. Yeah, 3:00 in the morning.
Thank you.
Mayor, city council?
15, 20 years ago, they had, if you got arrested for anything drug-related, and you got jail time, they could court order you into a rehab within the county. And I think, I don't know if they still do that or not, but that, I think that's what they should go back to, and, and drop the level of felony. Let it, let it be, you know, possession was a felony, it isn't anymore. So I think forcing, well, forcing people, getting court cards, forcing them to, to go to AA or NA, and having to get a court card signed, I think that would be a good thing to bring back. Thanks.
All right, seeing no one else rise and no one call in, we'll bring it back to council for discussion or a motion. Councilmember Ayella.
I'm all for having a healthy discussion about homelessness and, and all of the things that affect our community, and I think we've had many of them in the past. I just don't like to play a whole bunch of hypotheticals and ask a bunch of questions that are really going to potentially lead nowhere. A lot of times, we can sit here and pretend and ask questions and make it seem like we truly are invested, but it's truly and honestly with our vote that we reflect we are truly invested with making any kind of change in our community. And, you know, prior council, we talked about the whole riverbed issue, prior council, yeah, but there's people that were on that council that are still on this council that also voted negatively for not maintaining the, the amount of effort that went into that. So let's be real about that. There's actually part of that that's trying to get back into this day, and God help us if that happens. But in my opinion, I think that today, we were asked to review the report, accept the report, and if we want to bring back a discussion about panhandling, then let's do it, and let's schedule that, and let's really vote on it and talk about it and bring a solution. Otherwise, just throwing it out there, to me, it's like word vomit, we're not getting anywhere. So I'd like to put a motion on the floor that we accept the report, that we bring back the actual encampment as the city attorney brought forward, that we bring that back so that this council can actively vote towards resolving something and putting something in place that effectively works and can coordinate and, or can work well with public safety as well as what public safety has expressed in their presentation and their discussion about how they make sure that they help and assist with the wraparound services that the county does provide. I would like that to be my motion, and then if somebody else wants to put it out there to do the encampment, let's do that too. But at minimum, let's accept the report, and let's bring back the encampment, and let's vote on that, and let's make that official.
So the motion is for the camping ordinance to be brought back for discussion, and if someone else would like to bring forward the panhandling, that would be a separate motion, is what you were saying. Okay. Councilmember Vega.
Yeah, I'd like to make an amendment to that, that the panhandling to be, along with the camping, to be throughout the city.
So, so I'd have a request. Let's make them two separate motions.
Okay.
And, and absolutely, I will support them, but let's, let's keep them separated, since this, the agenda item was for the camping, and then as soon as we finish that, because it's one more item, but because it's related to homelessness, I would go ahead and entertain your secondary motion. But I'd love to finish the camping one first. Are you okay with that?
Well, I'd like the camping ordinance to be a ban throughout the city instead of a section of the city on public land.
Staff can bring that back as part of a discussion as to where we can.
If you want to do it in two parts, we can do it, I mean, instead of one at a time, but I get it.
Thank you. So we have a motion to bring back the camping ordinance and discuss where it would apply and if it could be over the entire city of public property. And we have a second from councilmember Vega. Any questions? All right, let's vote on that. And that passes 5-0. Councilmember Vega, because it is related to homelessness, and because you brought it up during this time, if you'd like to make a motion to bring back our panhandling ordinances and have them reviewed, and how we could improve them and add anything to them to make our community more safe, I'd be happy to entertain that.
Absolutely, absolutely. And actually, I'd like to see if we can do a panhandling ordinance throughout the city also, if that's possible, and maybe we can bring that back for discussion. If we aren't in a position to make that decision tonight, unless the city attorney can tell us that we can't do it.
I'm sure with the presentation, we can find out where it would apply.
Yes, as the police chief said tonight, we already have an ordinance on aggressive panhandling, but we can bring back an item to see if we can strengthen that ordinance in any way. And I'd have, I'd, sorry, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
That would work, yes.
Okay. Councilmember Stubbuck.
At this point, I want to put all guns on target, so I'll give you a second for that too.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second regarding our panhandling ordinance, and to bring it back for review. Any other questions or clarity from staff? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0 as well. All right. New business, item number four, approval of independent contractor services agreement with Longpoke Unified School District for the School Resource Officer Program. Our police chief, Kevin Martin, will make that presentation.
Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself from this. My small business does a little bit of business with the school district, so out of an abundance of caution, I'm going to recuse myself. Is that all I need to say?
Thank you, councilmember Ball, that covers it.
All right. Now the floor is yours.
Well, thank you very much. All right, council, mayor. Before you tonight is the staff report in regards to the School Resource Officer contract with the Longpoke Unified School District. As, as many of you are aware, we've had for many, many years now, at least 15 years or more, we've, we've supported the district with a school resource officer. more, we've supported the district with a school resource officer. And I think it's an important, it's an important position, not only for the community, for having an officer on campus with the way things, the violence that many communities are experiencing today, but also for the staff, and it's just been a real positive relationship for us at the police department and the school district. And the school district covers the entire cost of the officer while they're on campus, to include after-hour events, and whether it be a graduation event, or whether it be a football or basketball, if they're needed there, the school district covers the cost for that officer, the SRO, and then if there are additional officers needed, they'll also pick up those additional costs as well. So there is really no cost to this, to this position while they are on campus. During the summer months, the school resource officer is reassigned, he's part of the investigation bureau or detectives, so that, once the school is out and they've finished everything, they have all their responsibilities there, they all come back and work caseload with the detective bureau. So, as it stands right now, it's been a real positive program. So, the staff is requesting that you approve the contract and authorize the city manager to sign off and move forward with the agreement. I'm available for questions, should you have any?
Thank you. Any questions for the chief before we go to public comment? All right, we will hold for any questions until after we hear from public comment. On item number four, if you would like to speak to this item, you may come to the podium for three minutes, or you may call in at eight zero five eight seven five eight two zero one. All right, seeing no one rise and no one call in, we will bring it back to council for discussion or a motion. Councilmember Iello.
I think that this is something that sadly is part of our everyday school life, and probably something that needs to be maintained, so I motion for us to accept and to allow for the city manager to go ahead and engage.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
And it was seconded by Councilwoman Starbuck, and I think the important thing is, is that the school district requested this, it's not us imposing it on them, but a partnership with the school district asking for that support. So, let's vote. And that passes four, zero. All right, councilmember Ball, wherever you may be, you are welcome to return to the dais. He knew, he knew this would go smoothly. All right, while he returns to the dais, Madam Clerk, did we have any written comments?
No ma'am, nothing.
Thank you. Here is your opportunity for the final oral communication of the evening on City Matters. If you would like to speak to an item, you have two minutes. You may come to the podium, or you may call in at eight zero five eight seven five eight two zero one, eight zero five eight seven five eight two zero one.
Hello, Carl Jones again. The Long Polk Valley Botanical and Horticultural Society, we will be hosting an outdoor meeting and a guided tour afterwards at the Burt Mesa Chaparral Garden, right behind Allen Hancock, on Sunday, fifteenth September, from two to four. So we'll have our normal meeting, and then we'll have one of our members, we'll take you out on the trails, show you our chaparral garden. So, we are, anybody shows up, it's more than welcome, you're invited to come. We actually have a display at the Long Polk Library that we set up for the Horticultural Society, if you want to learn a little bit more about the society, go check out the display, it has a little bit about the history. The meeting is actually held under the live oak tree, that the original meeting was held that started the society in nineteen seventy-eight. So, you're all, public is more than welcome to come. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no one else rise and no one else call in, we will close oral communications and come back to council for comments and reports. Councilmember Iello.
No reports.
Councilmember Starbuck.
No reports.
Councilmember Ball.
So, I had the opportunity, thank you, Mayor, you weren't able to attend, so I was able to attend the AmeriCorps Awards Ceremony over in solving about a week and a half ago, and just wanted to give a shout out to two people here on Long Polk, Mrs. Haley Corral and Maria Macias, both received some awards for two years and four years of service with AmeriCorps, and that was really great, proud of them.
Thank you for doing that. Councilmember Vega.
No reports.
Thank you. Due to my needing to be in Roseville for Northern California Power Agency meetings, and Mayor Pro Tim Iello not being available, Councilmember Ball did participate in the United Way AmeriCorps program representing us, so I thank you for doing that. The legislative and regulatory meeting was my final meeting as chair of that subcommittee, and at the September meeting, I will become chair of Northern California Power Agency. So, there is also the executive committee and the regular committee meeting that I attend. The Long Polk Valley Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Committee meeting held its first official meeting here earlier this week. Be looking forward to engagement with the community on several ideas and concepts that we will want to hear feedback from our local businesses as to how we can address, and listen to the concerns that we're experiencing in the community when it comes to economic drivers. And then, our second Vandenberg Space Force Base Mayors and City Managers Meeting occurred, and we're making good progress for a regional support of Vandenberg through the cities, and as that moves forward and comes back to council, you'll hear more about some of the ideas that are coming forward from our local community and city representation here in North County. And the last thing I want to do is say I attended this afternoon's retirement for our hospital, the Long Polk Valley Medical Center's CEO, he is retired as of five o'clock today, so I want to congratulate Steve Popkin on his retirement, thank him for his service. It was an intense five and a half years, given he came into the role about ten months prior to the pandemic. So, having to lead our local hospital through a international health crisis, he did so very well, and has left our hospital improved, and I want to congratulate Yvette Cope, who was promoted internally to take over as CEO, and I look forward to continuing to build the relationships we have with the hospital and the school district over the past eight years. It's been a goal of mine and our current city manager to build relationship with those entities that each have their own budget and boards, but have a huge impact, and that we work better together as a community when we're in communication and in partnership on those fronts. So, thank you to Mr. Popkin for establishing that, and for choosing a CEO that will continue that. For those of you looking to get more involved in the community and/or recognize important members of our community, the chamber has two programs, one is Leadership Long Polk Valley. It is a program that really educates the community members that participate on it, on so many different areas, from city government to the base, to law enforcement to the arts, to the school district, and so much more. You really get to understand each of the sectors of our community and build partnerships within it. I had the pleasure, that's how I met Councilmember Iello, is she came into the following class from my class period, and how we have continued to build on those relationships with community members and friendships that we developed in it, so I highly recommend that, I believe that application window closes this Friday. And then the other important program that the chamber puts on is their annual awards banquet. It is the time with which the Long Polk Valley Man and Woman of the Year Award, the Small Business Hero Excellence Award, and the New Business Award are awarded, and that comes from recommendations from you, our community. The nomination forms are online, the deadline is Monday, September ninth, there are letters to gather, there are applications to fill out, nomination forms to fill out. I highly recommend that if there is somebody you feel has contributed highly to our community, not in an elected position, those don't qualify, but you see individuals out in the community on a regular basis, you know the investment they're making, and you'd like to recognize them, this is your opportunity to do it, and I highly recommend you take advantage to of it. So, with that, I will adjourn this council meeting to the next regular meeting of September seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, sorry, at six thirty PM.